Service Committee and Health and Safety Committee. In my reviewing of Resolution Number Two Eighteen Twenty-One, Two Thousand Twenty-One, that authorized the Service Safety Director to enter into a permanent agreement with the Bratwurst Festival, it recite that it's the Finance Committee who's the sponsor of the legislation. I also did some review of past council and committee meeting minutes, and they also revealed that the closing of the streets for the festival is addressed by Health and Safety, and the charging or waiving of fees by the city to the festival for safety forces and cleaning services has always been addressed by Finance. So in light of that, it would appear that this matter cannot be discussed tonight, and it must be referred at the next council meeting to the Finance Committee. And again, that goes the same for also the Health and Safety Committee meeting to discuss that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jenny Vermillion, Five Fifteen Hill Street. Mr. Greg White spoke at the full council meeting this past Tuesday regarding the wastewater treatment plant and expressed concern of using taxpayer money to fix the current eighty-year-old facility as option two. Arcadis offered another option to replace the aged and dilapidated facility. Will it be more expensive? Yes. Will it be worth it to replace it versus repairing it? My opinion, yes. Will it enable the city fathers to entice business and residents to more easily into our community? Yes. Does a facelift provide increased capacity for business and residential and expansion? Yes, it would. Government is renowned for kicking the can down the road. Nothing ever gets cheaper, nothing ever gets easier when it's kicked down for the next generation or generations. Fixing the current facility may seem a good idea, but I challenge that the best thing to do is not kick the can down the road by putting lipstick on a pig and reconsider the third option of replacement, which will ensure our children, excuse me, and grandchildren who stay in the community or come back, that they don't have to be forced to replace a wastewater treatment plant at a greater expense when we could do it now for cheaper. Is it our responsibility to ensure a future for our community? I ask, does putting a facelift on a current facility accomplish that? Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Jenny. Anybody else? Seeing none, I will get the minutes before you for the August third meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept them.
To move.
Got a motion by Mr. Young, second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Motion carries. Okay. Open projects. I think Jeff has something he wants to go on that right now.
Uh, yeah, for the Two Thousand Twenty-Four OPWC project. It's, uh, next year, it's part of the Northwest Truck Sewer that we applied for engineering for last year, and it involves around Franklin Court, Garnet Court, Tiffin Street, Minette, and Blan. And it's all part of our long-term control plan for the EPA. Um, so that was our phase two of next year for that. Uh, we just need to do, uh, a resolution to allow me to apply for the OPWC grant for a hundred and eighty-five thousand to put towards that project. The rough estimate right now, mind you, this is between sanitary sewer, stormwater, and the streets. It's probably gonna be pushing two million dollars. So as we put the budget together for next year, might not be able to do all of it, but we still can, we'll still qualify for the hundred and eighty-five thousand. So, uh, just need a resolution to apply for the grant.
Okay. You need it from us or from Finance also?
Yeah, I think money will be receiving, I think it would come from you guys first from then.
Okay. Okay. We need to, uh, you got any, anybody got any questions for Mr. Wagner?
So you just need permission to apply for a grant?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, then I would make a motion to allow the City Service Safety Director to apply for a grant.
Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Ms. Sherrick. Any second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Young. Any more discussion on it by anybody?
Hi.
Yes, you got something, Vicki?
Was that, was that project referred to the Service Committee as well as the Finance?
It was referred at the last council meeting, but no one was here to talk about it.
So not, not this Tuesday, but the Tuesday?
Right.
So it should be on open projects, but it hasn't been updated to that list yet?
No, no.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know in looking at the Finance Committee Minutes, it says Twenty Twenty-Four OPWC project. No further information at this time table to next meeting. But I don't think there was any reference to that.
I thought we talked, I thought we talked about it, but...
On the Service Committee Minutes?
Yeah, we didn't.
Yeah, it wasn't on the Service Committee.
No, it's not on there, so.
I don't have anything.
Do you have your Service Committee Minutes?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see where it's listed at, so.
Well, I guess then the question comes up, um, yeah. If the Service Committee, um, looking at their minutes, there was no discussion by them, um, I would have to go back and check, but it would be safe to assume that it was only referred to Finance and not to Service as well. And Service would be considered the, what we called, the Sponsor Committee. They're the ones that that's where the project...
Service.
Yes. Finance comes in at the end after, you know, the Service says, yes, we're favorable to this, then Finance comes in and says, well, yes, we're favorable to paying or we're not favorable. So, it would appear that this matter, you really can't talk about tonight either. That it needs to, um, have a referral to the Service Committee, and then the Service Committee needs to discuss, and then the Finance Committee.
Good.
Thank you.
Not on this one either for this week, but, okay. Uh, you want to withdraw your motion?
Oh, withdraw my motion, we'll wait for it to be referred to committee.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay. Looking over the list of open projects on the Service Committee, um, does anybody here think we have any that we can take out? The first one, it says on access TV.
That one, yeah, we don't have access TV anymore.
Nope, let's take that out, whole thing off.
Yes.
Uh, the mill and pay for this last year.
Well, that was, that didn't even refer, it's even says does not belong in Service.
Okay. That's gone.
Um, stormwater ordinances is usually an open project.
Yeah.
I mean, it should be listed all under, it should be under stormwater.
Yeah.
And then the different things listed as to what we've done.
Yep.
So it, it needs straightened, and garbage and sewer rates is a, is an open project because of change.
Sure, sure, yeah.
But other than that, oh, and the airport projects, we usually just leave it under airport, the projects are usually underneath it.
Good enough.
But the EV chargers, did we decide that we were gonna just table that, like, get rid of that altogether for now?
Yeah, we're gonna table it, because it's gonna come back sooner or later.
You want to leave it in there?
Yeah. It's gonna come back, there's no doubt. Okay, so those are the ones we'll take out. The salt one and all that stuff, first part of it, first half.
Well, it'd be the access and the mill and pay.
Yep.
O dot salts a yearly thing.
Yep.
Stormwaters yearly comes in, yeah, so we just need to get it rearranged.
Good enough. Okay. We don't need a motion for that, do we?
No.
Okay, good enough.
No, they're already done.
Okay, anybody else in the public got anything they want to say on Service Committee? Okay, we'll adjourn at six eleven.
August twenty-fourth, Two Thousand Twenty-Three.
Call the meeting order at six eleven PM. Members President Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKiever, and myself, Chair. Is there any public participation for Health and Safety? Seeing none, you have before you the minutes from the August third, Two Thousand Twenty-Three Regular Health and Safety Committee Meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Mr. Young. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion passes. Jumping ahead to the Crawford County Joint West Ambulance District. Mr. Gurnert or Chief Schwentley is one of the two. Do you have any information for us?
So the board met, and they have not yet approved Todd Township joining the Crawford County West Ambulance District. So then what we have come up with is, um, we will contract specifically with Todd Township on a month-to-month basis until such time as the ambulance district agrees to allow Todd Township in. I think that's a fair statement.
Yeah, it's in currently contract with the ambulance district, they have to have written approval from the city prior to allowing additional members to...
So it's not that they don't want to add them, they just have to procedurally went through all the steps to do so?
Correct.
All right. Is the amount that you're going to charge them going to be equal to what their per capita would be as a member of the district?
Yes, just on a month-to-month basis.
All right, so what do you need from us? A resolution allowing you to enter into a contract or entering, allowing the Service Director to enter into a contract with them until such time that they are approved to join the district?
Yep.
And so the piece that I prepared would A, give the city consent to Todd Township joining the ambulance district, and B, until such time as they've hit all of their procedural hoops, we would contract with them for two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars a month on a month-to-month basis.
All right, so we're looking for a resolution authorizing the Service Director to enter into a contract with Todd Township for the amount of two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars providing EMS services to Todd Township, also authorizing the Service Director to give notice to the Crawford West Joint Ambulance District that we are in agreement with them becoming a member of said ambulance district. Does that get that all right? And as an emergency?
As an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, so a motion is made by Mr. McKiever and a second by Mr. Wireball. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That motion carries. Dora, um, so between Mr. Gurnert and Mr. Wireball, where are we on this? I know that Mayor gave a little bit of an update, but there's just been so much, nobody knows what in the world's going on here lately.
Well, I have to go to the house with you, I haven't been involved with the Mayor, so , um, he didn't give me anything before he was gone, and I really don't have any updated information for you, as Mr. Gurnert does.
I do, I, I don't have any, I know that the Mayor was looking at taking donations to install signage, um, and there was some discussion about getting the cups here and then selling them so that we would have, um, reserves in order to manage Dora, um, but, yeah, I haven't really been in the loop on where we're at on that.
So, I mean, we've had now how many months to get these permanent signs in place, and, you know, a couple different organizations seem to have maybe dropped the ball on what the initial plans were. Um, I don't know, my opinion is that we probably need to set a, a deadline that if this isn't done and the permanent signage is in place, that we're gonna suspend the thing until the signage is in place. I don't know how, how the three of you feel about that, but...
We gotta do something. I mean, we've been dragging our feet on this, it should be pretty simple to do is put signs up.
Do you, Jeff, do you have any knowledge of the possible cost? I mean, I, I know you may not, I just...
No, I don't.
How much does a normal sign usually cost? That would be like...
Like a sign that you would put out for a political sign of that big?
No, these need to be per-permanent metal signs, permanently affixed. More like your no parking signs.
Yeah. It'd be, it'd be about the size of...
We order them in bulk, so I, I'd have to go out.
These would be in bulk too, you have to have, I think there's thirty-two of them on the map.
When I see a rack, it's for like fifty of them.
Gotcha.
You know, I, I've never, I can find out and have it for the next meeting.
That, that would help, but...
Just, just the Mayor.
And Bonnie.
Bonnie.
Dan, your thoughts?
I don't think it's our, I don't know, it's like, like, I don't think we should be involved in it, it is the...
We as a city or we as a council?
No, we as, uh, you know, managing this, if the, if the Chamber doesn't want to do it, if the economic development doesn't want to do it, then drop it, because, you know, we got bigger fish to fry than, than that, you know, and, you know, I like it, I like the Dora, I like, I think it would bring, uh, I think it adds to the, to the community. Uh, I don't think there's any issues, you know, the police chief's right here, I mean, I'll tell you, but, you know, we got bigger fish to fry, you know, than to be messing around with signs and, and, uh, so, if the, if, if, if there's not an organization that wants to take it and run with it and do what needs to be done, then let it go by the wayside because, you know, we're a community, we're not, we're not up here dictating what's gonna happen in, in this community, so...
Mr. Gurnert, do you have any knowledge of, you know, the, this was a brainchild of the Chamber and the partnership, and now it's, my understanding, neither organization wants anything to do with...
That is, based upon the email that I saw, yeah, it seemed to have wanted to allocate responsibility back to the city for management.
I kinda have to say I agree with, with Dan on this one, that one of those two organizations should probably continue to spearhead it. Vicki, did you have something?
Well, um, you know, I was provided a copy of the email that Sarah Hurley, and I mentioned this at Tuesday's council meeting, that she sent out to the downtown businesses, and I read just parts of it, but in response to, you know, what are those organizations doing, in the letter it says, "Initially, the Crawford Partnership and the Bussaras Area Chamber of Commerce played instrumental roles in supporting the establishment of the Dora. Our organizations worked closely with the City of Bussaras in facilitating the application process, providing cups and signage for both boundaries and participating businesses. However, both organizations have undergone staff transitions, and the Dora is now permanent." And then they just went on and then just said, "We wanted to let you know the City of Bussaras has assumed full responsibility," which I, I have to question, I mean, it's the, it would appear the Mayor's the one that just said, hey, the city's gonna assume this.
Yeah.
And I mean, doesn't the council have something to say about this?
Well, yeah, and I mean, no disrespect to the Mayor of the administration, but did he, did he need that authorization from somebody? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, he had to have authorization from council to even have the Dora.
To apply for it, yeah.
And in the Dora application, it states that it's those organizations that will be handling the cups and everything. And so now, there's a change if we continue to allow Dora to continue.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what's next? Uh, no, just as, as the Bratwurst Festival decides, you know, nobody there's interested anymore, is the city gonna take that over? You know?
I mean, I guess I'd almost like to have a representative from each of those organizations standing here in front of us to answer their questions and, and get their true confirmation that they're completely out of it, if that's the case, and, and then we need to decide what we want to do, but I think, like Dan said, we've got bigger, bigger things to worry about than having the city employees ordering cups and distributing cups. I know that Delaware, for instance, the, uh, let me finish my sentence part, forget where I was at, and then I'll get to you. In Delaware, nobody buys the cups, they buy their own cups, and then they are given stickers or a design for a sticker, and they actually each place prints their own sticker and puts it on the cup. So, I mean, there, there's options, but I think that's, the cups aren't the bigger issue right now, it's getting the damn signs up that we've been waiting on for, for six, eight, ten months. Terry, sorry.
I was gonna ask, what, what does other cities do? I'm, I'm sure chambers run them in Delaware and other, and other cities do, I bet the city doesn't get involved in it.
To be honest, I don't know, but I, I think when you look at the signage in Delaware, it could be the Chamber, it could be the city, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, might be something...
When, when they were, when Aaron Stein and Jesse Ferner were here, I know that they both shared with us that there were many chambers in different cities that were doing it, I don't think that they said that all of them were, were done by chambers, but...
I'm just curious on why we weren't made aware. I didn't know until I showed up at my business and found the letter.
I got a letter at my, my office as well.
I opened it and I thought I had missed something.
Yeah.
And just, so I don't know when that happened, when that deal was made.
Yeah.
Or what that contributed to us.
Yeah, we have to bring it in.
So we've got really two questions, I think, that we need to address. A, do we want to just let it ride like we have been, or do we put a stop to it until we get answers? I don't know which one's the right one. And, and B, you know, if, if that's the case, that we're gonna just let it ride, do we, do we give them a timeline, or do we wait and do that at the meeting when we can bring everybody in here?
I think we need to give them time, put a timeline that they gotta come in here and get an answer, to see where it falls. I don't think we should close it. It does help the local businesses. Yes, we do need the signs, but let's get them in here and bring it to a head so they decide which way to go.
Would your office be able and willing to get a member from each of those organizations as well as a representative from each of the permit holders, so we can have everybody in the room and have a discussion, so everybody's got, that has a stake in this, can, can be heard and, and be part of this discussion, and do that at our next Health and Safety meeting? Would that...
I'll send a letter to, I'll reach out personally to the Chamber and the, um, partnership, and then send out a letter to all the permit holders.
And then could we just make sure this is on our agenda for two weeks from now? All right, Aaron?
I was gonna say, um, with this timeline thing, can we make it, hey, if it's not seen on that date, it's put on hold?
I think, like Mark said, let's, let's bring them in and then...
Well, that's what I'm saying, that way we, if you guys don't come in, that kinda puts people, this is your notice, either you come in and talk, or we're gonna have to put this on hold.
Maybe put in your, in a case to them that we're, uh, we're considering all options, including terminating it if we don't get some solutions, is that kinda where you're going with that?
Kent uses wristbands, like they have at concerts. They have a wristband that people get, it shows that they showed their ID somewhere, it shows that they're participating, and that way it's not even a different cup or anything, it was, they said it was a lot cheaper. The city of Kent, so...
Thank you, Mr. Gurnert.
Mr. Jerry, I wanna add one thing. All I can add to that is, I did hear a little bit of conversation that there were two of the people that are, that have Dora. I think we're gonna take over, take care of the signs, but that's, I can't tell you who it was, but...
Mayor mentioned that the arrogant goat was interested in sponsoring them all.
There's somebody else, but I don't know who that was, so...
Yeah, I just think we need answers.
Well, no, I, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying...
Yeah.
If he has that emotion that they're gonna take care of him, then that would factor into what we're gonna do.
Right, we gotta figure the cup situation out too, though.
That's fine.
Okay.
What do you view?
Thank you.
You know, as I've said before several times, I have no problem with the Dora. I just wanted the application, you know, followed.
Yeah.
And my big concern is, we have no signs out, and what happens, uh, Chief Ostenheimer, if you or one of your officers sees someone with a Dora cup with alcohol in it, and they're outside the boundary, because you know what the boundary is, but there's no signs telling the people where they're allowed and not allowed to go to, how, how, how could you enforce?
I mean, just like, there are, the boundaries are if they're gonna partake in the program. And they've been up, it's been going for, what, a year now? And I would think, I have a pretty good idea of what the boundaries should be.
And if they're a local person, yeah, but if, if...
Right, but like, I think they're still assigned down by the post office.
They just put one under the post office.
Yeah, there's a couple of the temporary signs that are...
There are some signs still around, but I do agree that a permanent sign would be...
And they're not the right place.
Right, according to the application, I...
It ends the street, it doesn't have a...
Yeah, I believe there's supposed to be fourteen signs. The last time I checked, there were three, and as Aaron pointed out, they're not in the proper place. I mean, how can you not read a piece of paper that says, a sign goes here, and look at the map? And then, as a citizen, my concern is, you know, when the application was passed, it was passed as an emergency, and the emergency reason was for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city. And I sort of chuckle at that because I have to ask, where does carrying an alcoholic beverage, how do you consider that the health, safety, and welfare?
I've heard a beer a day makes you live longer, so...
Well, and I mean, you know, I would not be happy if, you know, I had my grandchildren here and we're, you know, outside the boundary, and, you know, there's somebody down there walking and drinking and maybe not in their right state of mind, um, but anyhow, I have to agree, I think it needs to be suspended. You know, we, we don't have to get rid of it, just suspend it until the application is, is followed. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki. All right, next up is purchase and appropriations of guns and materials for the Police Department. Ms. Lewis, do you have info, or is that the chief, or...
Um, I don't have a lot of Health and Safety info on it, um...
More the costs of it?
Yeah.
For, for finance?
Yeah, um, they want to purchase more guns, and then we should get a reimbursement for trading in some old guns, yeah.
So is this just, in essence, upgrading to current model standards?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and these are, these are, like, I think I've said before, when you're trying to order forty ammunition, it takes you a year to get it.
Yeah.
Nine-millimeter ammo is readily available.
How long's it been since we upgraded the last time?
It's been ten years.
Ten years? Is that about average?
Twenty fourteen, correct.
And...
And then, like I said, if, if, I mean, if we don't upgrade them, I mean, we're gonna need to do some maintenance, order springs, like I said, the night sights don't last forever.
Yeah.
I don't want the guys on night shift not be able to see their sights if they have to use them.
We'll, we'll ask the question in Finance Committee if the, the money is somewhere that, that we have for it, so I'll ask that question later, but, um, from, from this committee standpoint, um, are, does the motion need to come, really, the legislation needs to probably come from Finance?
I would assume, um, and I did also just regarding, about the safety thing, um, the bulletproof wall that they, for materials, it was a bulletproof wall they want to install downstairs.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have to add, sorry.
Mr. Young, you all right moving this on to Finance?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. McKiever?
Yes.
Mr. Wireball?
Sure.
As am I, all right. Open projects, Mr. Gurnert brought with him this evening a proposed ordinance, uh, like a draft of a vacant structure registration. I think what I'd like to do, unless you have anything you'd like to highlight about this, let everybody take it home and digest it, and we'll get this on the agenda as well for our next meeting, and, uh, see if we can get some traction with it.
Yeah, that was sort of my perspective, you guys had it, and then we'll talk about it after you've had an opportunity to read through it.
And likewise, we just got our updated copies of the open projects list, I'd like to ask each of you to take this home and digest it and come back with, uh, what you wanna nix out of it, uh, at our next meeting. Mr. Young, do you have anything you'd like to bring up this evening?
Sure.
Mr. McKiever?
No, sir.
Mr. Wireball?
I'm good.
All right, any further public participation for Health and Safety? All right, any further public participation for health and safety?
Feral cats. At the last committee meeting, uh, Mr. Myers, you stated, we could do some research to see what other communities are doing about this problem and to put it on the next committee agenda.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. Um, I haven't had a chance to look for anything. Uh, Mr. Gerner, have you guys had a chance to find comparisons?
Talk to the Humane Society, I haven't done any community comparisons, um, but some communities, according to the Humane Society, will actually find people for feeding. He said that's the main issue, is that people putting out food for, um, and attracting the cats, um, so that was a thought, but I haven't actually looked in.
Who, A, who does the finding, and B, who enforces that?
Cyrus Police Department.
Because as I understand, the dog ward is simply a dog.
It's simply a dog.
It's not a dog and cat ward.
It is not. No, yeah, I mean, it would pass a, it'd be sort of city ordinance outlawing it and making it a, you know, minor misdemeanor, up to a hundred and twenty-five dollar fine or something like that. Yeah, I know the chief of police is not in love with that idea.
Yeah. Are you coming on this topic or a different topic?
This topic?
All right.
Do I ever jump topics? Okay, shut up. Um, have you guys been up to date on things online and about the two women in Georgia who the police harassed to the point that they actually arrested them, and then they just won a lawsuit against the city, uh, for getting cats and having them fixed and releasing them, because they've got all these feral cats, and their idea was, first of all, you, you, letting an, an animal starve to death is, is cruel and unusual, just like letting a human, but they were literally, you know, taking them in, having them fixed out of their own pockets, but it's, it's, but then they release it because they're like, it's not my cat, but I, having it fixed, now it's not having kittens either, which is kinda what we need more of with these feral cats, if, if they're not, you know, pet worthy, but I, I'm gonna tell you that the second you start finding people for feeding animals, it opens up a really big bucket of worms.
Yeah, I don't think we've got to that point where we're considering it, I think he just mentioned that as a.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, yeah, that, because that was just a huge topic online and in the news, the same.
All right, we'll try to do some more research on that as well and get some ideas. All right, any other public participation? Hearing none, health and safety adjourned at 6:33.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, August 24th, 2023.
Calling Public Lands and Buildings to order at 6:35 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Brenton Potter, and myself, Ciaran Sherrick as chair. Do we have any public participation?
Great, off to 10 Ethel Street. Um, back in February, we discussed the fate of the Pines Reservoir, and I was wondering if we had any kind of update tonight on where we're at?
I have not heard about anything yet. Uh, I had just asked Mr. Myers if the guy had contacted him as well.
Joe Leslie, I've not heard from him at all.
We were waiting for him to contact us.
Damn.
I know I told you I was gonna try to get ahold.
Last time I was up here and said you talked to Joe.
Yeah, I had talked to him and I haven't, and.
He said he was gonna call.
He assured me that we'd have this resolved by the end of the year because, you know, my term ends the end of the year, at least one of the things.
Do we need to call him and show him that we're interested, or just let it die, or what?
No, I'll, I'll try to reach out to him at some point here, so, but, yeah.
In all fairness, that's one thing Dan said he wanted to take care of before he got out of office. He did tell me that.
He did say that. That's what he told me in the stairwell too, but I'm thinking, he, Joe might be sitting there waiting, because last time we talked to him, it, it fizzled out, so he's probably thinking, and now he's probably waiting for us to contact him again to show that we're interested.
Well, we had, I, I, was the, somehow the commissioners were involved in that. Oh, they, what happened was they had this whole thing ready to go and they brought it in front of the commissioners and they didn't know anything about it, apparently, so anyhow, uh, yeah, I need to do that, so add that to my things to do, but.
And is Josh Dyer still involved?
Jo, when I talked to Josh, he said basically, you know, uh, they are interested, but he had a couple other properties he was working on that were, you know, because the, the way they operate is they just get properties donated to them, so, and that's what this would probably end up being too, but he had properties he was working on too, so. So I, uh, I guess about the time we had the conversation before, that's, I had contacted both of them basically the same day or within days, and, uh, and like I said, I, I asked Joe right out, I said, is this something you can get done this year? And he said, oh, yeah, yeah, well, we're planning on getting it done this year, so, but I do need to reach out to him again, so I will try.
Good, and I also had a question. I see the cities opening up their hunting lottery again this year, like they have for years, and, uh, the last few times they've done this, the Pines Reservoir's been off the list, and I was wondering if someone had a reason why?
Well, I think it was in the, we were in the middle of breaching at the Pines and.
Now that's all done and everything, can we get that put back on the list?
Uh, we, we, I don't see why we couldn't.
We didn't make them.
This, I mean, it's.
I know you guys probably had no clue.
Yeah.
That it was taken off the list or even included on the list, but for years.
Well, we had it closed just due to the breach, but.
Yeah, they were in construction out there and everything, which I understand, but that's been a couple of years now.
Yeah, I don't know why this, in my opinion, I don't know why Jeff wanted to, but he couldn't, you know? I mean, I don't think we need anything from us.
Because I believe, I believe they give.
So don't let us hold you up.
Five.
Oh, and then Jeff did it, I'm not, he might hold it.
I believe it.
I refer to Mr. Gerner, that I don't see no reason why we couldn't, the biggest, and we even talked about taking the gate and opening it back up, but.
See, I'm kinda against that part, because I know what happens back there with the gate.
But it's city property, technically it should be able to be used.
Excess, yeah.
Ex, yes.
Well, that's what I've been saying since February.
It's gonna turn into, you know, we're gonna clean up tires and TVs and furniture.
That's why I suggested we'd that gate closed, but rather be signed.
I don't see no reason why we couldn't open that up for the hunting, the lottery, there's no.
No, that's something that I, I have never really come across, but we can talk about that. When they, when they do the hunting, like, they sign waivers, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know they, they have the lottery.
Well, right.
I don't ever get in, and I have my own areas and stuff, but there's guys out there that have been getting in it for years, and I believe they give to like five people, and with the Pines being off the list, you're gonna have five people trying to hunt the 98 reservoir, so I, I can't see why the Pines isn't on there. So we're gonna try to get that back on the list then, and you're gonna get ahold of Joe.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you, you keep me, you keep me in check.
You're running out of time, Dan.
I know, keep me in, keep me in check, you know? I know I'm running out of time.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Ray. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from August 3rd.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Uh, we have a motion for Mr. Myers?
A second.
Give it to Dan.
A second from Mr. Wireball? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. The open projects list, uh, do you guys wanna look over this separately, or did you already, I mean, I know.
I'd like to take them home and go through each of them.
I say, I know the cameras in the art park was taken care of, and the Mary Street Bridge was taken care of, and the Perry Street, you know, parking lot three, that was all off the list from previous, but yeah, so if we wanna go through and see what else we know is off there, there'd be three.
The wind turbines can be taken off the list too.
All right, so do we have any other public participation? If not, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:42 PM.
Plating Committee, August 24th, 2023.
I will call plating to order at 6:43. Kevin Myers, members present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, and myself, chair. Any public participation? Seeing none, have the minutes before you.
I'll move to approve.
One second.
Okay, I have a first from Kevin, a second from Terry. There's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, unanimous. Like everybody else is saying, you have the open projects. There's some on there that I see that we can probably close, but let's go over them and discuss it at the next meeting and try to eliminate as much of these as we can.
That's good.
Uh, with that, do you have anything that you'd like to bring up in, you know, you three?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Okay. Any public participation?
Ede Sean, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. At your last plating committee meeting on August the 3rd, you had the Morton-Lindler sewer and stated no further information at this time, tabled to the next meeting, which would be tonight's meeting. Are we still with no information?
That's administration, we don't have anything to do with that. We have to wait for them to get it to us.
Yeah.
I can give you an update of what we're working on right now, and it's not ready to come back to committee yet, but we're working on a grant for the Morton-Lindler substations of the waste plants to get them eliminated, so we're working on applying for a grant. They're our grant writer, and we just wanted to get it into committee, and we have all that information, and the engineers working on the cost, that we'll bring it back to respectable committee.
And then you also had on your agenda housing, and that was no further information tabled to next meeting.
Nobody brought anything?
No.
Who's, who's supposed to be bringing that information on housing?
Well, we've been working with Crawford Partnership, it just doesn't, I mean, it takes time to work on that, and I, I don't wanna get into the discussion tonight, but we talked about the Pines. We've gotta get infrastructure put in on some of these places where we can add subdivisions, but it takes a lot of money to do that, and with the price of what it costs a contractor now to build a house, we gotta figure out a way to get these infrastructures put in so they can sell the lots and build the houses, so it's, it's very complex.
And, and I totally understand that. The only reason I'm asking is because it was talked about, or it was on the agenda at the last meeting, and it says tabled to the next meeting, and I'm afraid if we don't keep inquiring, it's easy for it to slip through the cracks.
We just met, we did contact the Partnership and talked about housing, what we need to do, and who can we get to partner up with, and jobs Ohio, so it's, we're, we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, 6:46 PM.
Economic Development Committee, August 24th, 2023.
All right, I will call Economic Development to order at 6:47 PM with members present, Ciaran Sherrick, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself as chairman. Open it up for public participation. Uh, seeing none, we will move on to the approval of minutes from the August 3rd, 2023 committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Sir. Got a first from Ms. Sherrick and a second from Mr. Young, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Um, and then just like everybody else, we're gonna go over the open projects here. I know you said you had a couple that you thought needed to be taken off.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple that are done, but.
So the local board of tax review?
Yeah.
Is that the appointment of two members?
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause that's done, and.
Yeah.
Business income tax rebate, we talked about that, no, didn't need.
Okay. And then I know you guys discussed the annexation again, last meeting.
Yeah, that's one of those things that comes up.
Yeah, I feel like it needs to all be kinda lumped into one as well, being that most of these properties listed on here are, um, along Lincoln Highway east of the city, so they're all kinda lumped together. I know I wasn't here last meeting, but did we get anywhere with the discussion of the annexation?
Um, so there's, uh, case law out there that, I printed it, but I forgot to bring it. Theoretically, you can force people to annex if they receive city utilities, um, even if, even subsequent, like even now, even not when they sign up. Uh, I know Dan had mentioned, uh, a, a good first step would at least be for any new people that are signing up, have them sign a contract saying, uh, if annexation or if we're contiguous and we otherwise meet all of the requirements, then we would submit an application to annex into the city, uh, so at least, you know, being proactive as opposed to, um, not doing anything.
Sure, how do we, how do we get that ball rolling? Is that something that?
Yeah, I'll put together that and talk to the, um, water department, and so, yeah, any, anybody that signs up for, uh, new utility services through the city, we could have them in their application packet signed, that they agree to become annexed upon meeting all of the other requirements.
Kevin Myers, 421 West Oakwood. If I am one of those people that lives out there and I, and I apply for services and I sign that contract, and then I sell my house after I've got those services in, is there anything that can force that to be as a deed restriction, or is that just a lost case scenario?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I mean, they, yeah, so you could put in that when they're signing up, that in the event that they sell it, a, a term in a, in any deed that you, uh, transfer, um, a term has to be, you have to include that, um, this, this property is subject to, um, being annexed upon meeting the criteria, yeah? I mean, you could, that could be in the front end so that then it would be on the property owner to make sure that that's in their deed.
Aye.
Aye. Jenny Vermillion, 515.
I would say on that line with Kevin's, what about with when houses are just, are sold? Can't you make it a, a thing that if it's already within, that when it sells, it would be, because, I mean, the thing was they didn't wanna hit people who shouldn't have been hit with it when this all got signed into law, but, you know, is there a way that we can do something that when these houses that should have been annexed and sell, that at that point in time, they would go into?
Yeah, I mean, you could pass an ordinance saying, uh, any property receiving city utilities that is transferred or sold, um, you know, we would have to, a stipulation would be that they include that language in the, in the deed when they go to transfer it. Thank you. Off the cuff, I mean, I haven't actually looked at case law, but I would assume that that's doable.
Jenny Vermillion, 515 Hill Street. Those contingencies are all well and good, however, annexation has to be contiguous.
Right, you have to meet all the other criteria.
So if you have A, B, C, D house, D house sells, A, B, C don't, having this stipulation on D is moot.
Right, until, until such time as A, B, and C are, you have to bring them in at the same time.
You're, you're talking 15, 20 years down the road sometimes.
Right, and if we would've done this 15, 20 years ago.
Right, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
I get it, it's not, it's not overnight.
Hence kicking the can down the road. Um, until that time, when A, B, and C become contiguous, double their fees. If you're receiving city services, sewer, water, not necessarily water, but definitely sewer.
Water is, there's something funny about water, you can't.
Yeah.
Charge, uh, different rates, but sewer, you'd have.
But sewer.
Sewer, absolutely, yeah.
Double their fee, they don't want the double fee, annex.
Right.
Simple as that.
Who's in charge of enforcing the annexation ordinances, well, you know, the ones that we already have established that we're not doing anything about? we already have established that we're not doing anything about?
Probably falls on the law director's office, yeah. I would assume.
I wasn't trying to call you. That was a genuine question.
Yeah, I think that it would probably be under my umbrella of things.
Okay. Because I know, there's just a few of these here that say that-
Thanks for that, by the way.
There's a few of these here that said that it was discussed with, you know, certain businesses, TSC, First Federal and stuff, by the past law director, looks like back in 2014 through 16, and then there's no other information. So I don't know what that means or where it went from there.
Right. I, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, is there anything else anybody wants to discuss on that or any other open project?
At this moment.
No? Okay. So we'll move to public participation again. Anything anybody wants to talk about? Seeing none, we will adjourn at 6:54 PM.
Finance committee, August 24th, 2023.
Call finance to order at 6:55 PM. Members present are Mark McKiever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair. First up, some public participation on finance issues. Any public participation? If not, we're going to move to the approval of the minutes from August 3rd, 2023.
I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second? First by Kevin, second by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're going to talk about lands and buildings outside engineering lines. Is this something you know about?
This will be turned over to the auditor.
Oh, the auditor. Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. So what is going on there is utility prices have been rising and there were some, in, in a lot of these here, there were some areas in the budget that might have been cut slightly to balance things last year. So we got to a point where our Columbia gas bill needed paid and we did not have enough money in that line. And we have the authority in the auditor's office to switch money between the same line items. So on the paper where it says like 23 before contractual services, as long as it's still that number, we can prove that money. So we took $9,000 from contractual services and put it in the line to pay our Columbia bill fee. So now we're trying to reimburse that $9,000 to that line.
Okay.
That's it for that. I could keep going down the list if you guys want me to.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we just, yeah, just go down your list and we'll get you out of the way. So next is indig, indig, yeah.
Indigent.
Yeah.
Yes.
Burial, yeah.
Unfortunately, we've had a, more citizens passing than we thought who needed the services of the city to help them provide a burial or cremation. So we have utilized all of those funds so far this year and we're estimating we're probably going to need about 4,000 more of the same amount pass that have already passed in that line. Next, we have civil service for advertising and testing. We've also had quite a bit of a turnover with the city recently, as I'm sure you guys have seen. So we've had more civil service tests and advertisements, things like that going on. And we had spoken to Sharon Hildreth and we, and she thinks, we all think about $5,000 will get her through to the end of the year. The purchase and appropriations of guns and materials for the police department. So that is located under the $6,000 under materials and supplies, under program, general government. And then also for the guns, it's the $15,000 under security of persons, property, police department capital outlay. And that's about $21,000. I know Kevin mentioned if we had that money in the budget to do that, we had received a settlement for $17,500 roughly. It was a little more than that. And we also sold two cars and on gov deals and that equaled about $3,500. So that would be your $21,000. That would not be touching any of the safety forces levy money currently accumulating or anything we should be saving, I guess.
Thank you for that explanation. That made a lot of sense there, so.
If you want me to go ahead and just talk about the investments, so I mean-
Well, do we want, we need these, let's get these appropriations, because that's not part of this. Let's get these appropriations approved and then we'll-
Follow along with me. Make sure I got them all. I'm going to request emergency legislation that authorizes the appropriation of $9,000 to the contractual services line in budget number 7770, $4,000 to budget 7202, $5,000 to the materials and supplies in fund 7745, $15,000 into the capital outlay in fund 7710, and $6,000 to materials and supplies in fund 7710. 7770.
Yes.
Sorry.
As.
As an emergency is what my first sentence was.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So we will get that, the next meeting, we'll get that voted on. Now, let's do some investments. We need it.
So our representative at Meter Investments stopped in not too long ago and she had said that she thought it would be a good idea for us to go ahead and redo our ordinance, just approving our investment policies. She said there was no changes needed, that she just thought it would look good to the auditor of, the county auditor and auditor of state to have this redone. That's about it. But I have it all in this little packet if you want to look through it or read through it.
And that's basically just updating our ordinance?
Yeah, it's just staying the exact same, just with a new year and signature.
It sounds like a good idea.
I'll make a motion requesting legislation that approves the adoption of the Besar City investment policy.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We got all that. Are you, are you keeping up there? All right, good job. You just holler if you need us to wait because I know it's, it's new. Tap fees, I guess we're on to now.
Yeah, I think all of you aware that we received a grant for 1.2 million or 500 tap fee?
If I may interrupt?
No.
I guess.
We have a problem with the tap fees as far as how they were referred. At Tuesday's meeting, the mayor referred the tap fees to both the service and finance. When President Vermillion then stated, "We have a referral for tap fees to finance." Do I have a motion? Motion by Spiegel, second by Myers. Since the motion did not include the referral also to service, and since service has to approve, the tap fees matter before it goes to finance to approve the financial part of it, it would appear that we can't talk about this tonight or you can't talk about this tonight. And the previous motion needs to be amended to include the service committee, and that should be done at the next council meeting.
If I may add one thing?
Yeah.
I need to pull it off the committee. I do not need it.
No.
I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Wonderful.
I can refer to Mr. Gerner, but the way the grant works, it doesn't need to go through any committee. That's what I was going to say.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So you want to talk about, about your wages?
No. That's not me. That was the mayor wants to-
I didn't, I didn't think so. And I guess we'll probably have to table that because that was his, his do, or his idea anyway. All right, open projects, yeah, we've got a bunch on here. So we really need to, and I glanced at it briefly and there's a lot. So I'll try to go through it too. Everybody try to go through it and see what we have to get off there. Anything else from finance? Any other public participation? All right, well, let's adjourn here at 7:04.